Are we up? We're up, can you hear me now? All right, here we go. Class, yeah, we're in session. Sit down preacher, we're not just... Noah, come on up. Well, you're the one ignoring me back there. Yeah, you were trying to, you probably trying to...
Uh, Sergio? Nice to see you.
Yeah, there you go, there you go. Well, is that before I call the meeting to order, it's my pleasure and honor to introduce Pastor David Player, which I call him Preacher, from the Victory Memorial Methodist Church to give our short invocation.
I'll do my best. Let us pray together. Almighty God, how grateful we are that we have the privilege of being able to speak to you, of being able to thank you for all you are and all you do, and especially to come and let our requests be made known. We are so grateful for this beautiful creation that you have made, for each of us being a part of it. We are so grateful for Guyman and our sense of being neighbors and the leaders you have raised up with vision and with focus to keep Guyman strong and growing. We thank you for all those who work and support our efforts. We are especially grateful for the Mesa Water Project that will safeguard our water supply. We thank you for all of those that watch over us and protect us, especially our first responders. Lord, we come tonight with heavy hearts because of the recent floods down there in the hill country of Texas. A heart's break to hear of children who've lost their lives and those who've tried to save them and many have lost their lives in the attempt. Be with all of those families who are grieving tonight. Be with all of those that are busy trying to locate any survivors or recover any of the bodies of those who are deceased. We ask for your grace to be poured out upon that community. And Lord, we ask tonight for our meeting that each of us would sense your presence, would receive wisdom from above, that you'd bless the decisions that are made and then the commitment to execute and accomplish the plans that have been approved. Thank you for all you are and all you do. We are grateful, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Garrett, would you give the flag salute for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I froze up. Good figure.
That's all right.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, I'll call this meeting to order. The agenda item number two is attendance roll call and determination of a quorum.
Mr. Alvedres?
Present.
Mr. Idson?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Mr. Hilton?
Present.
Ms. Sanchez?
Present.
Ms. Hoffman? Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you. Before we start with public comments, I'm gonna, we're gonna interject something in the meeting that I overlook in Geraldine and I talked about. We forgot. We've got a special guest with us tonight, Mr. Kip McMurtry. Kip, he's right there in the back row. Come on, head on up this way while I brag on you. He was on at the Delta Cap again, a state essay contest for winning the eighth grade first place. The process, what makes your hometown special? And Kip won the deal, so we wanted him to read his essay, but I'm gonna let you come up here so they can all see you and we will let you do the meeting. So ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Kip McMurtry. Let's just put both of them right there. I'm gonna get out of his way.
Guyman, Oklahoma, the Panhandle paradise. Guyman, Oklahoma, may not be as famous as big cities like New York or Los Angeles, but it has its own charm that makes it feel like a paradise to those who live here. This small city located in the Oklahoma Panhandle is known for its warm community, beautiful landscapes, and strong agricultural roots. For people who enjoy a peaceful, friendly environment, Guyman is the perfect place to call home. It may not have beaches or skyscrapers, but it has something even better, a sense of belonging. One of the best things about Guyman is its close-knit community. The people here are friendly and always ready to lend a helping hand, whether it's a neighbor bringing over food during tough times or a friendly wave from someone you pass on the street. Guyman residents make you feel like family. This town is small enough that everyone seems to know each other, which creates a welcoming and safe atmosphere. The sense of togetherness is what many people dream of when they think of an ideal place to live. The natural beauty of Guyman is another reason why it feels like a paradise. The wide-open plains and stunning sunsets make every day feel special, unlike big cities filled with concrete. Guyman is surrounded by nature. You can enjoy activities like hiking, fishing, or simply sitting outside and watching the stars at night. The fresh air and peaceful scenery make it a great place to lay, eh, to relax and escape from the noise of the world. Guyman is also a hub for agriculture and hard-working people. The city is often called the queen city of the Panhandle because its important role in farming and cattle ranching. The annual Pioneer Days rodeo celebrates this heritage with fun events like bull riding, parades, and carnivals. These traditions remind everyone of hard work and dedication that built the community. Living in a town where people value hard work and celebrate their roots is inspiring and creates a sense of pride. In conclusion, Guyman, Oklahoma, might be small, but it offers a paradise-like experience for those who appreciate community, nature, and tradition. Its friendly people, beautiful landscapes, and strong agricultural roots, agriculture heritage, make it a unique and wonderful place to live. If you ever visit Guyman, you might find yourself falling in love with its charm and wishing you could stay forever. Sometimes the best paradises are the simple ones. Guyman is proof of that.
Hang time here. Guys, let's get behind him. Let's get in with him. We're all lucky enough to hopefully, that he'll take a picture with us so he can send it. Very good essay, good man. Mom, you want to take a picture? We'll wait. Thank you, Kip. And that's what we do this for, the kiddos. All right. Back to agenda item number three. Does anybody have any public comments? Anybody have any public comments? All right. Agenda item number four is approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, agenda item four.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Hilton?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
My computer died.
Bob.
She had moved the screen. Discussion and possible action to approve ordinance number 902, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map for north fifteenth feet of lot fourteen and all of lot fifteen and lot sixteen, block six, the Bonner Sullivan addition from one dash two to C dash three. It's also known as Sixth Street of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, and of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Guyman, providing per separability, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and declaring an emergency. And there's some ordinance, and I think we've got some pictures. Mr. Bayless?
How are you guys this evening? Mr. Canyon, he applied for a rezone to that property because he has been housing plastic bottles and pallets and other items over there, and then he was wanting to build a carport. We kind of drew our attention to it, and he was not in the, not in the right zoning for what he was wanting to do there. So we told him to apply for a rezone, and as he did, order adjustments went ahead and approved. We had no protesting. We didn't have any issues with the rezone. I mean, he's just wanting, and I believe it was industrial right now, and he is wanting to change it to the general commercial.
Any questions, comments, discussion?
No issues with this one, huh?
No, no issues with this one. It's a property right there on E Street, right before you hit the railroad. It used to be...
Where Perkins had there.
Yeah. It's, they split that property up, so somebody owns the pallet business, and then somebody else owns that other property that's closer.
Where the big fire was not too long ago.
Yeah, yeah. This is not that property.
Right around there.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve item five, discussion, possible action to approve ordinance number nine zero two and ordinance amending zoning ordinances and zoning map. Item five.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Hilton?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Make a motion, we declare item five an emergency.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Agenda item six is discussion and possible action on awarding the bid for the Guyman Municipal Airport Construction Box Hanger Project, number 24005334 to Firebrand Construction LLC for a base bid of $1,910,700. There's a recommendation, and Mr. Shannon, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, well, I'll touch on it just briefly. Mayor Council, the Federal Aeronautics Association, FAA, had money just for, and they call them box hangars, but what we're calling the transit hangar. Any given day, you go out there and you'll see some of your larger jets coming. They bring a lot of people in, they take a lot of people out. If somebody wanted to spend the night, and this is happening quite frequently in the Midwest and all around the United States, is that a lot of our smaller airports have no place to hangar the bigger jets. So the FAA gave us close to $2.3 million to build a hangar. So, of course, we had to come up, even though they gave us that 2.3, we still had to come up with $100,000. And so that's a pretty good deal. So if you, if you got a $15 million jet, you kind of hate to leave it outside all the time. So it'll, it'll be constructed. It'll hold at least probably two citations, and it'll be for rent. And right now, they have to either go to Liberal, back to Amarillo, or somebody else like that that accommodate those jets overnight, so. They should, they said they should start, if awarded tonight, I think within the next 30 to 45 days, they'll start the project. Be a good addition to our airport.
And it's caused, it's a grant sharing program? And our cost's gonna be how much?
100, uh, 100, 100,000, 120 dollars, 365, yeah. $100,000.
Pretty good deal for a million.
And we'd already budgeted that out in the budget at the first year.
Any discussion, questions, comments?
I make a motion that we award the bid for the Guyman Municipal Airport Construction Box Hanger Project, number 2400534 to Firebrand Construction LLC. Base bid, 1.9 million, 10, 1 point, so $1,910,700, item six.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action to authorize advertising for bids on the Nash Soccer Complex, Phase Two, for additional parking lot and sidewalks.
Mayor, on recommendation of staff, and our surveys didn't get completed in time, we'd like to table this, please.
Make a motion, will you table item seven?
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Hilton?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item eight is discussion and possible action to change the date of the regular city council meetings of September 9th due to a conflicting date with Oklahoma Municipal League Conference and November 11th due to being a legal holiday. I think a lot of staff are planning on going to OML, and hopefully some of y'all can go down. Does anybody have any? I think we'll just let Levona poll everybody about a date, or do we need to set a date tonight?
I think the sooner the better.
The sooner the better?
Like, yeah.
So, well. For the September, or, yeah, September meeting. It should fall on the nights. We can either move it to...
16th, next Tuesday, or keep it in that week?
God?
Aye.
16th?
16th.
Think we'd make that work. Can you make that work, Levona? Okay. So do we have a motion to change the September meeting to September 16th at 6 o'clock?
I make a motion that we change the regular city council meeting of September 9th to September 16th, item eight.
Have a motion in a second.
Hilton?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
November 11th being a legal holiday, we can either go to the 18th or the 12th, which works best for staff. Either one?
Either one for me.
I would recommend the 4th, get away from the holidays, just in case people leave. The 4th? On November?
Oh, get away from the Thanksgiving holiday.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be a consideration.
But the 4th is planning a zoning? Yes. Would you...
The 4th is what, Geraldine?
Planning a zoning.
Oh.
November 5th?
We can do this.
Do a church night.
Do what?
Do a church night.
Sorry.
Say the 6th.
Sorry.
I mean, I don't have my calendar like that, but it is a, it's a day.
Correct.
I think the 6th is good. Is it Thursday? Yeah.
6th work for you, Jason?
Sure.
Have a motion.
Make a motion to move the November 11th to November 6th.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
All right. Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to approve an order of determination for the east 70 feet of lot 12, block 33 at the Funk addition to Guyman, Texas County, Oklahoma, also known as 211 Northeast 10th Street. I think they've handed out some pictures and staff reports are up there. We've done, we've been there, here once before, I think, with this one.
Hello. So today, we wanted to discuss possible action to approve the order of determination for beating trash. It's just beating the trash that we have on this property. The case has been on and off since 2022. We're just trying to propose, our case is really important to us so we can focus on other important cases that we need to, uh, process. So, starting with the nation, we recommend passing an order of determination for beating trash so we can get it as quickly as possible after, or if the order of determination is passed in six months, if there is a trash place on property, we're able to evade it without coming back to council.
So, so you're asking mainly just to clean up the trash, junk, et cetera? Nothing about the buildings or anything?
Nothing about the building. Right now, this 3D migration is weeds and trash.
I would just, the reason I was asking that question, it appears to me that that building was probably built without any kind of building permit, or it did, and it, it's out to the front property line, so it would probably never got a hearing before zoning or anything, or planning. But I just want to put that in about the building. I think the building needs to go also, but that's another day, it sounds like.
Yes, and if they were to apply for a permit to redo the building, any type of building, we would go back, check zoning, and make sure that everything is up to code. But we haven't had it, yes, please.
Anybody have any questions?
So would this just be the trash on the outside of the perimeter of property, or would we go in?
So this would be from public view, so anything you can see from the street or the alley.
Would that cross that fence line? Would that cross that fence line? Or is it outside the fence line?
Outside of the fence line. Or anything you can see.
So from the street, that'd be public view into that garage?
I'm sorry?
Would that be public view, the picture with the trash can and the gates?
I have another question.
On this one picture, where it shows the front of the building?
Yeah.
With the wood gate, is that public view or is that a private view?
That's, that's for the determination. That's not my call.
Okay.
That's your call. First is the call of the staff, and they should make the recommendation, and then you agree or not with it. So it, that's a back call for you.
Okay.
So in my, um, code enforcement opinion, I believe that would be public view, my opinion. We would be able to clean up, be anything that we can see.
Thank you. That's, that was the answer.
Seems like we spent a lot of time on this case.
Absolutely, more than we should.
And we've given them multiple other changes to comply.
Absolutely. We have offered early agreements, private hearings, which you guys have the minutes of that. In their opinion, the property is not in violation from our hearings. Maybe it has changed.
Any other discussion?
I'm just here for that property.
Okay. Would they like to speak on behalf of that property?
Yeah, come up. So I couldn't see you behind the pillar. I'm sorry.
I'm running late. I see a male trader in the hall. He's making over here. Um, I was just looking...
And before we start, and you are?
I'm Taylor Young, sorry.
Okay.
And I'm a resident of this address. I was noticing from these pictures that they are quite dated. I haven't had that trash can in a year and a half, two years. There's a, like an old car, Cadillac, I believe. Haven't had that outside in two years. I don't know if you guys have been able to look at recent pictures of the property. Like that, that's not been there for two years. Maybe, maybe a year and a half. So, um, we changed the timing. It's not like it was like it, I mean, there's snow on the ground. I don't know if anybody was able to drive by here in the last week or so.
We have pictures up today.
We've got pictures, is that?
Okay. Um, my question, uh, one of my questions is, so you, you live at the property, right?
I do.
Do you have power to turn it off over the property?
I don't. In fact, I don't even think that Thomas, who is the son of, in relationship to my father-in-law, who owns the property, he's 70, disabled. And actually, one thing that I had written down to ask and talk to you guys about today is that, I mean, I know Thomas has got a period, talk to it, it links with about his disability and how that kind of limits what we can do. He gets high irate whenever, and things are, I don't think away. So I kind of, I'm kind of in a, between a rock and a hard place with that. And that's not your guys' problem. I understand that. However, it's, it's not like how, you know? And so whenever, yeah, things like do end up outside the fence, I do try to make an effort, but then inside the fence. It's just, I mean, you see how dirty I am? Like I work two jobs, Thomas works two jobs. And it's, I spend a lot of time running back and forth just getting food, uh, in my free time. And so whenever I get home around this time, I do try to move things. Like right now, there's some blue buckets that one of our friends left for our garden in the back. I haven't moved them through. Just last week, we moved a metal table and some stuff out of the garage so that we have, you know, room to organize. And we're kind of planning a whole hall over of the garage itself and then some of the other parts of the property. So the tanks that they had an issue with, there was gasoline in an oxygen tank that were empty. They were just left with us. I mean, I finally was able to get them pulled off. I didn't know where to take them. I thought I was able to come home for them in our front yard. And that's, uh, I mean, we're still working on it. What I was unclear, it was made unclear to me, was that this case has been off and on. From what I understood, the case had been closed, so they just had to reopen a new case. And I know they want to focus on the cases and things like that, but like I told in the hearing, I mean, I can only do what I can do. And I'm not, I don't, I really, for you guys, not create a financial burden for my father-in-law to have to come and come to it because, one thing that was not really addressed whenever I talked to, um, what's his name? Chad, was that if I put flowers in front of the front, in the front, is that you're going to come and bake my flowers? I mean, I mean, what's, what's out front right now is, like a, I mean, like a little fence that's been made, you know, just an accent to property. you know, just an accent to property, and then I have flower pots out there. And that's really, essentially, that's really all we got, is there's like a binge that I've kind of fashioned. Um, I try to transition things that are out there to kind of be more an accent and hindrance to the property values and whatever that you guys care about. But , um, I'm getting out of the way, there's about one, one mower, and that's, that's it. And then, um, I don't see any other flowers that are violation.
Okay. Well, thank you. Any questions?
I, I just have a comment, because this property has been ongoing on and off throughout the, the years. Um, our staff in code enforcement have a job to help, not only make our, our P values or whatever, everybody just says, oh, we've got to look good, it's also to make sure our community's safe for all of our residents. So when we have, um, mechanical stuff out there, refrigerators, washers, dryers?
Go ahead.
I'm just, I'm just saying. When we have stuff like that out there, then it causes an issue if somebody were to pass by and have an accident, not only for the city, but also for you. So whenever they go out and they enforce code, code has been made in order to keep our residents safe. So, whatever we decide tonight, it's because we want to keep our residents safe, okay? And anyways, you guys as well, our whole community, our responsibility is our whole community.
And I, and I do understand the, the thing with appliances, and I have made a valiant effort to not have any appliances outside the fence. In fact, we don't have any inside fence. Uh, I have no appliances in my house, other than the ones inside the house at the moment. And there haven't been appliances outside the fence in probably two months, if I'm sorry. So, I mean, if my flowers are in, I mean, danger, somebody, I mean, I'm really in trouble.
Okay. Anybody? Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion? Motion?
I don't, I, I mean, this is just how I feel personally, but it's, it's stuff on the outside of the fence. Like Bree said, you know, Ern and David and all that, just the stuff inside the fence, it's, I feel like that's their property, that's their space. Really, the outside, I feel like it's public safety. Uh, anybody can walk down the sidewalk or if there is one, uh, and trip and fall. And so I think it's just the outside of the fence stuff is, is for me what needs to be cleaned up, not necessarily inside that fence carport area that you can publicly see.
I would like to make a motion. Um, because I agree with just I, and everything on the outside of the property fence needs to be cleaned up. My stuff cannot overflow into my, my neighbors, and it shouldn't overflow into the street or outside of my property, okay? So, with that being said, I want to make a motion to approve the order of determination for the east seventy feet, east seventy, it's like, uh, block, uh, block twelve, block thirty-three, Conca Edition, Diamond, Texas County, Oklahoma, AKA two eleven northeast ten street, for, um, determination to be...
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you, staff, and thank you for, for coming tonight. These are, these are hard choices to have to make, trust me. Agenda item number ten is a monthly report from Main Street Guyman. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Shannon. Uh, it's been with you all last month. We attended Oklahoma Main Street training, which is a requirement for our accreditation with the state. It was a really good training, and it brought back a lot of things that we're going to hope, hopefully can apply to our community. We learned a lot of things that the state's trying to do, some great things that we can offer some of our local businesses, so we're pretty excited about that. I did send you my director's report, if you have any questions on that. And this last Saturday was our first farmers market, and as we did last year, we, instead of just going around the courthouse, we started bringing the vendors down Main Street, hoping to bring people down into the district to shop. We have now, as of today, forty-seven vendors, so we are now starting into the fifth block of Main Street. So, the courthouse is full, Fourth Street's full, and now we're going into Fifth Street, so we're really excited. A lot of new vendors this year, so, um, hopefully we can tenure. I spoke with Rhonda Roman, and she said, we're gonna have to start opening earlier on Saturdays again, so, which is exciting, because, you know, that was the purpose of bringing in new names. That's what we have going on the next few, few months. Any questions?
How many businesses on Main Street are open during farmers market?
So farmers market runs until eleven, so we only have a couple that open at ten. But, um, so now they're saying, once it's open again this summer, they'll probably start opening sooner. I know last year Rhonda opened two hours early every Saturday because of the traffic was just so busy. I'd love to do it on this side. Unfortunately, we don't have the shade, so we're just gonna blow it out ways. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Agenda item number eleven is a monthly report from the Guyman Chamber of Commerce.
I'm updated, upcoming events list, because they just, you know, keep coming, so. That is good. It's a good problem to have, absolutely.
Thank you.
So, good evening. Um, thank you for having me. Uh, I sent you guys my director's report and the newsletter for July. Happy to answer any questions regarding that. Um, we did have a successful Fourth of July event in the park. Had lots of people out, I don't have numbers on that, but it's kind of a come and go event, so it's kind of hard to judge how many people are actually attending those things. But I did want to thank Councilman Alvedres and Mayor Peterson for taking their turns in the dump tank and, and helping us raise some money. Pastor Player also took a turn, since he's here, would want to say thank you to him as well. Um, thank you to the City of Guyman, they sponsored our music for that event, and our, and he was fantastic. Um, I think he's gonna get several recommendations from that, so he's, I've had several people reach out to get in touch with him. Parks, transportation, sanitation, they were all great about helping us out with roadblocks and extra dumpsters and, and things like that. So appreciate all of your crews that helped us out with those events. Um, the next official chamber event is the golf tournament in September, but our partners have lots of events coming up, and so we want to do what we can to promote and support those as we, as we move forward. So happy to answer any questions if you have any for me.
Is that a two-man or a four-man?
It's gonna be a four-man scramble. We're going back to a four-man this year, so that was the consensus. Um, those flyers and registration forms will be going out in the next couple of days, so. Anything else?
Rotary bingo in two more days?
I'm sorry?
Rotary bingo in two more days?
Yes, Rotary bingo on Thursday night, so come out and support the Rotary Club. Um, our proceeds from this bingo will be going to Oaks of Mammary, so, um, come out and have some fun. Our blackout prize is the Saad Poodles Night in Amarillo, so we've got some tickets and some vouchers for food and things like that, so come have some fun with us.
If somebody wanted to be added to your newsletter, how would they go about that?
They can give me a call. There's a link on our website where they can click to be added to our newsletter, and it'll send me an email. They can call the chamber office. Um, so, yeah, or text, or message me on Facebook, any of those are great ways to get added, so.
I heard a lot of good comments from the Fourth of July event. Just keep, keep it up. Good job. Hopefully it keeps growing.
Yes, so we added some fun things, hot dogs and jalapenos this year, so we'll keep working on that. But thank you guys for coming out and supporting the event. Anything else?
Think we're good. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
It's a good start to having a Fourth of July celebration. But I've retired, officially retired from the dump tank. I'm too old for that, trust me.
Almost didn't get out.
I almost didn't get out. I was afraid Sergio was gonna drown me, but he wasn't there. So anyway, all right. So we'll, we'll stand the jury as the Guyman City Council. Everybody ready? We're gonna reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. We've already done number one, number two. Number three is approve the minutes of regular meeting of June the tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve minutes, regular meeting of June tenth, twenty twenty-five, item three, second.
Have a motion and a second.
Hilton?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item four, we've already done, but if anybody's got a public comment, we'll give you a shot. We'll move on to agenda item number five, discussion and possible action to approve change order number one for Gates Utilities LLC for a contract price increase of twenty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars, an additional forty-five days to completion on the ODOT waterline relocation project. Park Hill's update and change order number one's attached. Mr. Shannon, do you have anything to enlighten us on?
Uh, not really. Uh, this came, uh, there was a couple of things omitted from the original plans, uh, that was connecting some business back up as new services, just small stuff, so. Um, project went fairly, fairly good, and now we just wait till twenty thirty-one, I think, when they come back in here and redo the, the street, so. I don't think my mind's working. But anyway, all good.
Thank you.
And we'd recommend passage of change.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the change order number one for Gates Utilities LLC, item five.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Hilton?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number six, discussion and possible action to authorize advertising for bids for two new and unused transport trucks for the sanitation department. Staff report and specs are attached. Mr. Shannon?
Uh, Mayor, Council, there comes a time in a truck's life when you just need to get rid of it. We have two of them that are basically, uh, the trucks that haul the semi-trucker fully solid waste, that they're, uh, they're, I think, just wore, wore out. I don't know how many hours, how many miles, but eight ton of miles, and, uh, we'd like to go in and get permission from the council to go ahead and bid out two trucks. Uh, these were budgeted, uh, they're in the budget for twenty twenty-five, so we're asking for permission to, uh, do the process.
Any questions, comments, discussion?
I make a motion, we authorize advertising for bids for two new and unused transport trucks for sanitation department, item six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Hilton?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
All right, agenda item number seven is reports from committees, council members, and city manager. Anybody got anything tonight? Staff?
Tracy? I understand, uh, hey, good evening, Tracy. How are you, buddy?
And that was supposed to say taco trucks.
Yeah. Uh, you wanna kind of give us a brief on well number twenty-one? As you all know, we've sent out the emails saying that we had, uh, mechanical failures of the pump itself, and I'll just turn, let, the good news is?
Well, good news is, uh, they were supposed to be here Thursday, but they showed it today sitting up, so, uh, and they could get started on it sooner or later. Uh, it's gonna depend, it's an eight-inch pump, I don't know with the state, I don't know if they'll have an eight-inch pump sitting on their shows or not, but hopefully, they will have one, if not, they can build one pretty quick. So, of course, there's, if they get it pulled out, put back in, they'll check to see what's the problems with it, make sure that the cause fires, it's basically the, the, the drive shaft, it rides in there, so it's not banging on the walls, so they'll check all right now, make sure everything's okay. It had a lot of vibration in it. Uh, I hope there's not that much more damage to it, but, uh, it's one of our best wells. But if they can get this thing pulled in, pulled out, I mean, maybe, if everything goes good, they got the pumps, there's some bits on, we can have a chlorinated, it's a twenty-four hour chlorination, Tuesday, Wednesday, we'll flush it, we have to flush it to zero chlorine residual, and then after that, we can get back tees, so it's two back tees, back to backs. Would it be like, if they get it held in and all that, we get a flush, and Sunday we can get a sample, Monday we can get a sample? Not this week, but if it works out, it's possible that we can have it back by next Thursday or Friday. If they don't have a pump, it's a possibility that it'll fall into the next week, so two weeks probably, could be the max, depends, but, uh, it's, it's taken us out about seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. So we're minus about seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. So, we have one well, one northwest pump station's out here by the airport. We could run it maybe six hours in a day, but then we'd have to let it recharge for about two days before we could use it again, so. That's why we're just asking, well, we please, just follow the emergency word that we already have in place. It's, you know, it's hard, difficult. I hate seeing my grass turn brown, but it's going to, it'll bring right back up. Uh, I think we'll be fine, I really do. No, we have a problem. That, that's the best order right there. They move in today, it'll be set up, we should be getting after it as soon as possible. We thank Hyatt, both your jumping around on this too, but they're, they're your partner.
Good deal.
So are we turning that one well on that takes two days to recharge, or is that a no?
Well, like I say, we have two wells, so we use one in Northwest pump station. We lost one, so, we're sorry, didn't mean that to you. We lost one, so we only have one going into it, that's only putting out three hundred and sixty-nine gallons a minute, so.
Okay.
It's a million gallon tank, so if we drain it down to half a tank, five hundred thousand gallons, I'm not real quick on that, but it takes that long to recharge it to where we can use it.
Gotcha.
That's why I'm saying with one well going into it, it might take us, they have two days to recharge, but if they'll let tanks, we can use them.
Not full day.
So, that's why we're gonna do it, and we can only use it for, we're, one of those pumps out there will put about eleven hundred gallons a minute. I mean, we can probably adjust it a little bit, but a pump will suck that tank down pretty fast. Questions?
Any other questions? Well, thank you and your staff for all you do. I know you guys live and breathe, keeping us in water.
You guys back there, they're awesome.
They are.
Yes, they are. They are.
Thank you so much. Anything else, Mr. Shannon?
Uh, I don't have anything. Uh, your financials are there, believe it or not, we're halfway through this, this year. Unbelievable. And things are running right on course financially.
All right. And, and Council, have any comments? News?
I have just a friendly reminder. We are halfway through summer. These kids are almost going back to school, but still we need to be safe on the roads. Uh, mind you speed them, especially in residential areas. Um, if you see anything that's inappropriate, speeding, whatever, uh, please don't call nine-one-one, but contact the police department.
It's free.
I was, it's, yeah, yeah. But, um, let's keep our community safe. It takes us all.
It does. All right. Anybody else have anything? I've got a couple of things, and I, I thank you all for, for taking care of the council meetings for the last two, 'cause I had to miss one for personal reasons. And then the second one I missed was my first board meeting at DEQ. And, uh, it's gonna be a good experience. I'm, I'm tickled to have been asked, and I hope that, that it'll be fruitful to the city. And, uh, I'm really, we had the, uh, bid lead-up and the engineers here from, uh, Ardua about the Mesa Water Project the other week, and it was a good, good, good meeting. Uh, we're getting real close to be ready to go out for bids on the first stage, so we can get that moving along. And, uh, I wanna, I wanna reiterate what we've already said. Thanks to the public for watching the use of, uh, water and being aware of it. I, I got a surprise this morning, my wife said, well, you know, I generally wash sheets today, but since we're in a water shortage, I'm not gonna do it. There we go. So, so, you know, it's the save every gallon you can. And, and I don't think we realize that we're not the only people in the world that have water issues. We had a couple in from Wichita back during snowbird season, and they said in Wichita, people have tubs, deals that they put in bottom of their shower to catch the water, because they're under such restrictions of what they can do with it. So, we've been taken well, good care of by our staff, and, and I, I give all the credit to Mike and his staff. They've done everything. So, thank you all. Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, I did have one thing I wanted to say.
All right, make it quick.
Because it was just a city full of half.
Right.
If you'd like that. It's nice to be able to get that through this and stuff, so to speak when I'm home, so I appreciate that.
And thanks for the newsletter, actually, sharing on Facebook as well. I've seen screenshots, so. Good deal, ma'am.
All right. With that, we will adjourn.
Everybody have a good evening. Great evening. Sophia's, Sophia's hungry.
Sophia's, we've got plans, I guess. Oh, wow. Oh, no. Oh, no. Thank you, sir. All right.